Um, we're following the meeting of the board of trustees of the library to order to stage like fifteen. Before we dive into reorganization, did anybody put any additions to the agenda?
No.
Great. All right, then I don't know how it works to talk about reorganization. I've never done it before. But Bill has, of course, submitted his no see, stepping down. So he didn't even fill the chair role. And I really don't want to do it.
Yeah, but Matt has said that he would. He was the chair before Bill. And Matt has said that he will do that.
Are you nominating?
I'm nominating Matt. I seconded.
Okay. Does anybody else want to run?
Congratulations, Jess.
Yeah, I hope I do have somebody to who is willing to fill in that interim spot.
Awesome. Well, let's take a vote on Matt with someone else running. All those in favor of William and Matt Ortiz for chair, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, you're the chair. How's it feel?
I feel a heavy, heavy weight upon my shoulders.
I think that means technically the meeting is yours now, question mark?
It does. Do you feel the weight coming off your shoulders, Jess?
Slightly in that if, Lynn, if you were at all interested in being vice chair, I would happily jettison it and give it to you.
You really don't want?
I, I'm very tired. Only insofar as this is a lot on top of, like, my life and everything that's going on. If Matt came from Twinkling or leave one, like, every now and then it would be okay, but, man, I don't want to be acting chair again.
No, you'll be, you'll continue to be vice chair.
If I have to be.
Well, I mean, it's up to you. I really don't know the responsibilities or duties.
I think it's just filling in for the chair. It can't be in the meeting.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'm willing if you, if that's something you want to pick it up.
I mean, as long as we're reorganizing, I would love it all. But I think now it's technically Matt's job to move that forward.
If we wish to reorganize and we have a nomination, we can definitely move it forward.
I nominate Lynn. Lynn, yeah, Lynn, I'm nominating you to be vice chair.
I'm sure you accept it.
Okay. I don't know what I'm getting myself into, but most of the time, I think.
And the first year that you were, it was not overgrowing.
When I was the chair, I think once Bill, Blake was the vice chair, and he always, if they weren't for me once, because I was like traveling somewhere and I just sent him a meeting and I said, yeah, you're gonna be the, you have to chair the meeting this week.
Yeah, I don't miss very many meetings.
So you're nominating?
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Lynn.
I think.
Okay, now, considering the reorganization tomorrow, select board willing, we should have Chris Burks in for next month. The big question is, do we have any thoughts or suggestions for people to fill Bill's position?
Yeah, Tara. Tara, Lordway Smith would like to volunteer. She said she would.
Yeah.
If she's willing, that's all we need.
Yeah, Tara, like Laura is a librarian, a school librarian, a school librarian. And she liked working at the book fair last year.
Are there any objections to it?
There's Laura. Laura's on there.
Here's Laura. We will wait for her.
My only question would be, because she's your partner, is that can we have someone who's a spouse, partner, on the same committee?
There's a little bit in the policy, and I'll look it up, about conflict of interest. I think just like a few words, so I'd love to.
Okay.
I think that would be.
Take it with me, but.
Well, she's willing.
I'm, I'm here now. Sorry, my computer's sound wasn't working at first, but I'm here.
So what you've missed so far is we did a little reorganization. Bill has stepped down from the board once we have his replacement and as chair effective immediately. While the meeting was called to order, I was voted in as chair. Jesse has been feeling a bit overwhelmed, so we then moved vice chair to Lynn.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Yeah, that, that, that is all you've missed, and we were right now discussing any possible candidates for people to fill Bill's position.
Okay.
This is what it says, our conflict of interests. It is the policy of writing library that potential or seeming conflicts of interest in purchasing, hiring, or providing of service arising or resulting, for example, from family or business interests must be avoided by trustees and employees. So it's up to you to decide if that is.
I would have wanted to know how to interpret that.
Yeah, pretty broad. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's not like, it's not like, even if you two agreed on something and everybody else disagreed, it'd still be outbooked.
Yeah.
You know, anybody, any, any other? Laura, Lynn talked to Tara about joining the board for the time being. You know Tara, because she's also a school librarian.
Yes.
And we just didn't know if there would be a conflict of interest if the two of them were on the board, but I don't, I can't really see it because there's seven of us.
And maybe just because it's interim, I think that may, could make problems.
Yeah.
Well, from a quick Google search, the AI says in Vermont, the law does not expressly prohibit spouses from serving on the same board, especially in the context of nonprofits, which this does not fall under. It would require probably a little more digging around than just looking at Google's quick AI summation, considering I don't trust the AI summations.
Well, they can find somebody else willing.
It's something we can reach out to Julie for.
Yeah. I was wondering about another person that comes to mind. I don't know, was the woman that wanted to be on the school board.
Penny.
Yeah.
Penny?
Is it Penny, is her name?
She used to be Bill's partner in the law.
Yeah.
Penny Bellini, I think it is.
She's given us a lot. Both Bill and Penny have donated a lot of library grants to mine, so I don't know if she's willing.
I don't know. We can approach her.
Somebody know her well enough to approach her?
No, but we could ask Bill.
I mean, if that one day.
Yeah.
Furniture.
Oh, is that her?
Yeah, that's.
Ask her. Ask Bill?
No, she lives in Pennsylvania.
By default, I think, like asking Bill.
Yeah, maybe.
Or we're not?
Well, you had said Bill had talked to, tried to get Heather Chase to talk to somebody, but that person said no, she was too busy.
That was to Lisa Nichols.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just an idea, because it would be nice to have somebody who is also an attorney on the board.
I agree. But that's a lot. You wouldn't have included them.
I don't even know what her name is, so.
Penny Bellini?
Penny, Penny.
I'm not a person.
But that was Dakin and Bellini, right?
Right, right. Oh, the valley.
The valley? Yeah, yeah, it's the valley.
Well, we can find out Tara's willing and we can find out if that's kosher with the town, and then we can also approach. Here, that's how I have Bellini stuck in my head.
Well, how do you pronounce it?
Benelli. But we could find out first about Tara, because Tara's already willing to fill out the intro.
Yeah, I mean, maybe then this woman would run for that position.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm dropping her name into the chat for spelling purposes.
Okay. And I'm, I mean, I'm happy to investigate her contact information and approach her if need be, since I was the one who recommended it or the idea of it. But I can wait to see about with Tara.
I'm gonna wait. I'll reach out to her.
Where were? So we have two possibles. We will reach out, see which ones are willing, although Tara said it, we'll see if Penny is willing and able. From there, we can have a discussion amongst ourselves about which we'd rather have. Yeah, it may take two months, but if it does, it does. All right, so next, we are looking to approve the minutes from June seventeenth. Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
Yes, I looked at it.
Were there any changes or addendums that needed to be made?
I can't speak to that because I was the one who wrote them. I don't have internet here.
Okay, I'm not hearing of any, so do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make that.
Let, let's say motion by Laura seconded by Lynn.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? They are accepted. And Laura, it looks like you get to play now.
Okay. So I sent out this afternoon the report. I hope everybody got it.
I did.
Okay, so through June thirtieth, we have currently a total revenue of hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and hundred fifty-five. Total payroll expenses through June thirtieth is sixty-two thousand, one hundred fifty-eight. Total other expenses, sixty-one thousand and thirty-three cents. In terms of assets, and the due to from other funds account, we have hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars currently. The CD is around twenty-nine thousand. Our wealth management account is at a hundred and eighty-five thousand, thirty-eight. And that brings us to a total asset of three hundred fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and four. Some items to highlight, we have the book sale. It's at one thousand eight hundred sixteen. Our non-resident fee is at three hundred forty-eight. Fundraising is at five thousand, eight hundred forty-four, and that's through June thirtieth, and I did put a note about fundraising that I'll bring up in a little bit. Donations is at one thousand twenty-five and grants, twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two. And in terms of expenses, I'm sorry?
I said, good job on the grant scale.
Yes, the grants are amazing.
Wow, that grant is, you spend the money and then they reimburse it, so they owe it like five thousand dollars, which I think we've already spent, so.
Hey.
And then in terms of spendings on the administration side, we spent thirteen thousand, two hundred thirty. That would include grants, grant money spent. Books and materials is at six thousand, five hundred seventy-four. Programs is at nine thousand, three hundred and five. Equipment and technology is at sixteen thousand, eighty-four. And then repairs, maintenance, five thousand, nine hundred twenty-two, and then cleaning charges is at three thousand, three hundred. So we are halfway through the year. Some items to highlight in terms of, so Lori, it has now included a note at the bottom of the monthly report regarding the quarterly check that we are receiving from the wealth management account. So the last check we received was in May. And so we have two quarters that we received a check, and so the total is three thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. And so she puts that note at the bottom. I asked her to do that, so we can kind of track the quarterly checks that we are receiving. Then my question for Gail, because I was looking at the non-resident fee, we have a goal of three thousand, two hundred dollars, but we're only at three hundred forty-eight dollars in terms of collecting non-resident fees. And my question for Gail was if she sends out sort of like a notice to all the non-residents when their card expires, maybe an annual notice to remind them to renew the library fund?
Yep, we do that. I can tell you, give you some history with that.
Okay.
When the budget was written, okay, start very beginning, on August twelfth, twenty twenty-three, writing library basically was born. Everybody's library card was then, every book started then, because that's when we got the automation system. So non-resident cards go for one year. So they went to last August, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the first time. And we did send notices out and they got emails and then a mail notice, but I didn't really delete anybody. So when I wrote the budget, it was kind of based on how many members we actually had, and then a little less. How many we had when we did the budget. Now, we have much less members, because like in the first of the year, after like three months or so, in the first of the year, I went and deleted non-resident members that hadn't renewed, so they're no longer there, because actually we pay, it's a flat, small amount, but for those renewal charges that we have to pay for the software and other things, we're paying per card hold. So we don't really want them in there anyway, for privacy reasons, you don't want them in there. Right now, we have fifty-five non-resident members. We are, the summer time is when we are getting new ones. Anyway, so we might have more. We usually get about one a week, but right now we have fifty-five. So like if we charge twenty-five dollars, that would be one thousand, three hundred and seventy-five. So next year, in the budget, it will be less like that. It was too high, but that was just based on the data we had.
The information that we had at the time, yeah.
And when do you send out the notices?
Well, everybody, it's when ninety percent of all card holds expire in August, whether you're resident or whether you're a non-resident. And so they get an email, multiple emails automatically from the system that go out. And I'd sent a letter about, well, last year I'd sent a letter saying that rate was gonna go up. You know, that's because we decided to raise the rate and to get, you know, you heard from the year before the end of the year. So, you know, in the fall, I'll send a letter out, but I'm, it's not gonna be, I think, now that we have a more real realistic number, I don't think these people are gonna need that. They might, but these, the other what we had before could have been non-residents from twenty-five, fifty years ago. I mean, they could.
Work. Up to date.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I just think it's good to at least send out something more personal annually, just to kind of like, you know, maybe even highlight some things that we offer, maybe new things that they're not aware of, if they want to become a member again.
Yes, we gave, we put a brochure in all of them to highlight benefits of being a library. But you know, it is expensive, as you know. I mean, like, I don't know what cost of a voucher stamp is, but it's.
Sixty-nine.
Yeah. It's. I, I kind of, if, if, if the email works, I'd want to give the email a chance and do the letter to like that, Nina, because it's expensive.
Okay. All right. And then the final item is for fundraising. So in the last two weeks, I processed a bunch of checks that came in from donors, and it's a total of three thousand and twelve cents is what I just got in the last two weeks as I was picking up checks. Those numbers are not reflected in the current information for fundraising. And I also received some return to sender envelopes, and I have been updating Donna on that as well, to update the database.
Yes, I've updated. The ones you sent me last week, I've updated. The one you just sent me yesterday, I have not done yet.
Yeah, I just wanted you guys to be aware of it. There's, there's quite a few actually where we received return to sender.
Right. And then I noticed some, some of the donations that came in were in memory of somebody whose name was on the kindle.
Oh, one of them.
File, so I had to kind of go in and say, okay, this person's deceased, so this person is the one who's making the donation, so trying to keep up with that. Yeah, there were quite a few that I entered. It was a good indoor activity.
All right, so did we have any question on Laura's report? Okay, and I believe we determined we do not need to vote to accept her report?
Great.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So on to youth services report and the director's report.
Well, Carrie sent a report. I'm not really aware of anything additional that needs to be highlighted. Send a reading program at school now. We've been busy, I couldn't.
I didn't get it from Carrie.
It was in Donna, it was in Gail.
Oh, it was in Gail.
Yeah, but, you know, we have been busy, you know, with people coming in the library and activities and new library cards. We're giving out a lot of new library cards, about residents and non-residents this summer. And my report, I, you know, the thing I would highlight about that, if anybody wants to take trustee training, it's on Tuesday, let me know. If I, we know by, I don't think it says right, oh, July eighteenth, which is very far away. It's much cheaper for us. When is the training? It's on the twenty-ninth.
What is, what's the training for?
Trustees.
Oh, trustees, trust training.
It's put on by United for Libraries, which is part of the American Library School, it's a virtual training, so, yeah. So, you know, I.
When do you have to know by game?
Well, for the discount at the early rate, it's July eighteenth.
Let's just, it'll be.
So it's a Tuesday.
Yeah, I'd like to sign up for that, please.
Okay, good.
I just have to.
I'm not, I'm not gonna try that.
I mean, if there's enough people, I mean, I don't know whether you guys want to do it from home and you want to do it. And from, as a group viewing on one place, it might be cheaper. If there's three people, you can do it via Zoom. Yeah, that's what it is. It's a natural thing. Yeah, I don't know. It's actually, if there's less than four people, it's really cheaper to register individually. If there's four people, more, it's cheaper, maybe to register as a group. And if we did that, we could open it up, like to even in the libraries, but let me know first who wants to go. I already mentioned a little bit about the grants. You know, I have to pay close attention to the grant. Invoicing and reimbursements for this Building Brighter Futures grant, it goes through the end of September, and it's a reimbursement grant. So the last time I can submit reimbursements is in September. So, and they want, I can't, to give a reimbursement. You know, we have to have ordered something, we have to have received it, they have to have paid the check. Sometimes all those three things take months. So that's why.
So that's, the town has to pay.
Yes, and we have to have, so they have to make a copy of the check that they sent. So sometimes the holdup is like we're having a presenter in August. But even if they pay the check, the town, we can't reimburse, ask for reimbursement after presenter comes. So there's that, and sometimes it's because the checks, I mean, I turn them in and they have their own schedule for when they pay them, and I'm really trying to be willing on top of it, because I don't really want us to have five thousand dollars that we can't get reimbursed, because right now, we've already spent five thousand dollars. Yeah, yeah, but we will, yeah. I mean, I'm hope, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that I can do it, Lynn, you know. So, but it's been hard. And we've had a lot of computer issues lately. I think Wi-Fi should be taken care of. We think the Wi-Fi stuff is taken care of. You still have problems with the phone from when we got a new phone system several months ago, and it's, and it works for receiving phone calls, but we've never been able to place the calls. We've, we've never been able to place, to make a message and leave a message on the internet for like people coming in, like we, if we had a close.
This is from BTO?
Is that a retail?
Yeah.
They have a tech line. Can't we just contact them?
We have contacted them.
Yeah.
They owe us a phone. We have contacted them. They have a ticket open for us, but the man who's been working with us for the Wi-Fi says he knows what the problem is, because he's, actually for the Wi-Fi, he had to work, he was on the phone with BTO for hours and hours in the library on multiple days, because that was the BTO that you, that was me. So, but it took a long time to work out what the problem was. So, but we think that, you know, he's gonna call a lot, that that should be fixed, that's a part should be fixed. And now I have a little problem with the, um, the website again. I'm working on that. I don't really know what the problem is, but. Um, I don't really know what the problem is, but, um. Problem's the problem. Oh, I know what it is. Okay. We have. I guess the theme that there was multiple themes, oh, a couple of themes on the website. What was being used as a theme for the website was digital, something digital. But Carrie and I for the last two years have been using DWP Bakery, another theme. But all of a sudden, when we go into, um, try to update the website. We only see stuff from two thousand twenty-one, and not much on the website. But what we see in the editor, it's from two thousand twenty-one, unless we use that digital, which. We have, it's, I mean, I can learn how to use it, but that's not what we have been using, so I would like to be able to try to use. Work that, it should be able to do it, it's there, it's on the website, it's on slide, updated, but that's not what we see in the editor. So, it's just confusing.
Cause I know with, with our website, it, it's switched from one to the other server. And I've always done it on a free Weebly, and all of a sudden it's like, oh, you have to use this, you have to use that, you have to use, and I just kept. Digging down into it, and then it says, oh, if you're using Weebly, click here. And then I could get on it and then I could do it, but it was something I had to really look for.
Yeah.
Um, and, and I think I called somebody.
Yeah, I called in on the phone too. And the issue, I mean, I called Blue House and Word Press, but I need to work out and find a solution. I have to call that W P Bakery. A third party, that's simple, I'll do that tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I've, I've talked.
They don't make it easy.
No, not easy, yeah, um, so then, um. I did contact the, uh, Steve, the facility manager about the construction that's gonna happen. At some point, and it's gonna happen now in the fall, I'm hoping. My last email to him in reply to when he said the fall was, hopefully we can do it in November. Because we won't wanna do it before, like, a week after the book sale, because. Well, September up to the book sale, we need to move around in here and sort things, and the week after the book sale, we need time to get back. And then we were hoping to do some special programming in November, so November would be best, the platforms for them. I.
I know they're doing a whole different system. I read that on the note, the, the select board meeting notes. That the sprinkler system is a wet system, and they're pulling it all out and putting it in a dry system, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Sounds like there's unheated areas.
But it's reversed, the, um, the wet system is the one. The dry system is the one that uses water.
I know, I just read the meeting notes for the town, I'm like, oh, this is what we have and this is what we're not keeping, and I'm like, okay.
I understand what they, what they said in the town, it's that the, whatever we're going to have. It made it sound like, I have a copy of it here, that it made it sound like it has to be exposed. I don't think that's right.
That's what it said.
I know, but I.
You would see, you would see the, the pipes and the things coming down.
That's right. I think what.
How else would the sprinklers put out a fire, cause these are exposed.
I know that.
They said the pipes will also be.
I think what it's saying is that. That the, um, really what it really should be is, um, a dry system, which is the one that doesn't have water. I guess, you're right, having a dry system, what we have now, the kind we have right now, doesn't have water, it has water in it, but it doesn't have water in it all the time. And they both have water. That's the one that you use in an unheated space. Well, that's the one you have to use, you, if you had an unheated plate and you were putting it in a basement, up in the. Above the ceiling house, you would have to use that one.
Wet system, wet, wet system is constantly, you know, under pressurized water. Dry system uses pressurized air and nitrogen to hold back the water until fire activates.
Yes, so that's what we have now, and that's one that you would have to use in a cold area, and you would have to use if you had a basement that wasn't heated. Yeah, because it might freeze. Our basement, I mean, I think that we could also, I don't think there's any thing that would preclude us from having. The new system above the ceiling towels. I mean, personally, I don't really care, I don't really, it's not the aesthetics that would be the issue. We have a low enough ceiling here anyway, I think. The lower exposed. Uh, water pipes might be lowering it.
I love the feeling that it has likely been taken into consideration.
I mean, it says. Yeah, I mean, it says. Right, I mean, it says that. The wisest thing to do is install a wet system instead of replacing the dry system. And Arnie, who's a plumber. Agreed a wet system is the wise choice for ease of maintenance, longevity and function, a wet system. Is the path they're headed down unless there's a strong objection.
Yeah, but this is the part that, I, all that stuff I agree with that, no problem, that is correct.
Right.
All that, the part that's not truly, I mean, crack, not crack, it's, it's missing something. Julie said a dry system is buried in the ceiling and a wet system is not. A wet system can be buried in the ceiling. A wet system is the normal kind of how a apartment building would have, most libraries probably, oh, you know, that one, it's what most people have.
But I think.
So pipe will be.
They're probably doing whatever's the easiest and least expensive, and it says if you have to paint the. Paint the pipes to blend in, and that's what they're gonna do.
Well, and that's the thing that bothers me, sort of, I think if you had pipes below the ceiling. I mean, it's already pretty low.
I mean, it's.
So, in my, if I remember correctly, in the basement. The plumbing is meant to be above the drop ceiling. With the sprinkler heads poking out. Whereas up in the main library, where they would have to tear apart walls and ceilings. In order to plant the pipes, that is where they are planning to put exposed pipe.
Uh, maybe.
That makes sense.
I didn't realize they were doing it up there, so that's, all right.
That's for the whole, the whole system.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Yeah, okay, then that makes sense, good, good explanation. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and then the last thing I would say is, I'm having surgery on July twenty-eighth, so, um, we gotta.
And you would, you've got coverage and Nikki's coming in or whatever, okay.
What's up?
Twenty-eighth.
That's on Monday.
I have to go to Colorado for a wedding, I'll be off.
We're in Colorado.
Vail.
Nice.
Yeah.
Man, that's what I said. Except.
I'm going to Colorado Springs.
I'm looking at the, the temperatures in Vail are fifty.
Now, if you wanna go to Colorado, Colorado Springs is the place to go.
Yeah, that was.
I, my nephew lives in Fort Collins, which I love.
Fort Collins isn't bad, my, my brother got married there.
That's, well, that's where I thought he'd get married, then he's like, no, Vail, and I'm like. Yeah, go to the most expensive place.
He says everything's red, dry and dusty in Grand Junction.
The high. The high desert. Anyway, okay.
All right, and did you wanna go over anything with your ALA meeting, Gail?
Oh, well, the thing about the ALA, that's when I started, that day, my train ride home. I mean, I went to a meeting that talked about, um, getting your website ready for, uh, new ADA law. And so I spent the train ride home working on the website, it worked fine then. Everything worked fine, but then a week later, I just couldn't hear anyone, so.
Yeah, I would give that all, I don't want.
Okay, and that moves us on to fundraising.
Great, um, I have a short report, I haven't done a full breakdown with comparisons again last year yet, because I would like to do that next month when we're pretty sure that most gifts are in for the letter. Um, but I can report that from information from Kindful, we've raised, um, two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars from forty-six gifts. Um, that doesn't match up with Lori's report. But I think that'll probably work out in the end once we're certain that everything's sticking.
It's not, because the reason hers is so high is because they deposited like almost two thousand dollars. The first month in January of last year.
Oh, no, I know that, I know, the line item at the bottom of Lori, L O R, okay, Laura, Laura's report, based on Lori's numbers, that there's like three thousand and twelve dollars from this letter, but I'm seeing two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six, which is like a difference in what.
There was some, um, there was a couple of people who are regular donors that just always give every month, so like, I. I think I put regular, I, I don't think I put it was a spring.
Good, great, that's how you should.
I think I put regular.
Yeah, and some, some items were actually just processed, um, like this, like today and yesterday, because I was actually out on vacation. And so I just submitted them to town today in the afternoon. I have. Updated numbers.
Right.
Well, should I give a one that just came in to Gail?
I can, yeah, I can pretty good serve.
Uh, so that's true. What my numbers are saying is two thousand nine hundred and sixty-six from forty-six gifts. Last year overall, the June letter raised three thousand six hundred and twenty-one from thirty-five gifts. Um, so far we can see that we're getting more gifts, but at a lower average gift amount, and I don't think that's bad news. Um, because retaining donors is really important, and our current giving climate is very difficult. Um, due to like economic uncertainty, giving in general is down. Um, so having, and it's like more competitive because more organizations are aggressively fundraising to make up for grants they're not getting. So, um, I think that in our case, having more donors giving consistently is really important, so we can aim to like maintain those relationships. And be able to tap people for more money when we are hopefully like through this rough patch. Um, so, you know, I think it's mostly good news, is what I would say, and that's pretty much our report, and I plan to have, uh, like a PDF that breaks everything down for everybody next month.
All right, so now we're on to the Policy Committee. You wanna go?
Matt and I met and, uh, went through. Um, because there was discussion of the personnel policy should probably be written by a, a human resources lawyer. And so we went back to look at the one that Marilyn wrote, and Marilyn is a human resources lawyer. So we went through it, made a little couple changes, clarifications, and. Huh?
Justed it.
Yes, we justed it, and, um, so our next step is to, we're gonna give it to the town lawyer. The Chester Town Lawyer to review, cause he has somebody. And then once they review it and say, we didn't say anything illegal, uh, then we will go over it with everybody. And get the final blessing. Um. So hopefully, if I get that to him. This week, maybe we'll get it back by next month. Uh, we think that when we all go over it, it should probably be just a special meeting, just to go over that. It was thirteen pages long, so. Um, you know.
Those pages is a sign-off sheet indication by.
Don't choke.
Sorry, ice. One of those pages was, uh.
Sign-off sheet, yeah.
Just a sign-off sheet indicating that employees have read and understand it.
Right, right, okay, so there's twelve pages.
Well, that's great that she wrote that.
Yeah, I mean, she, she literally. You know, she wrote it and it's, it covers everything that's supposed to be covered, uh, and then there, you know, there's some stuff that we have to go down to finalize, uh, but. And then Matt and I, like you said, we, then we spent two hours.
Yeah.
Uh, with the, where were we? Well, we were at the Merck, Merck and Pile, and then they kicked us out and we came here.
They were closing.
They were closing, and we came here and finished with that.
I get to have an, a, a nice flat white with, with a lemon cake, so.
It was good. And so that was it for the Policy Committee.
So, that, as far as the policies go. I think we might want to look at the collective development policy, cause that was one that we, I had, I did that, the.
Collection.
Well, there's a new law that went in to affect July first, that we are required to have one, and you should just review that.
Okay.
In light of the, what the new law says.
Okay.
If we look in Gail's report, she has a list of six or seven policies that need to be updated or created.
Yeah, okay, the collective development policy is the, you know.
That's the most.
Yes, it is, it's very, it is the most critical, that's why the state library. Yo, that draft of the policy which we looked at, maybe, I mean, maybe two little changes and send it on to you guys.
We could, um. We could look at that, Matt.
Yep.
Send to everybody and say, yay or nay, and we don't have to like wait for the next meeting. Corey. Would we have to wait for the next meeting?
For what?
If we, if we just. Do we just the collect, the collective collection development policy?
I think that you guys.
I think so.
Okay.
You guys on your own could, because you're not a, a forum committee.
Right.
And so you guys could work outside.
Yeah.
The whole group can't do like email.
Oh, right.
Like revisions, because then it would be like a.
No, we'll just, usually we, we'll just do it and you guys either say yes or no to what we did. Okay.
You're you.
Yeah, all right, so, any old business? I'm not aware.
Well, just a question, it's related to old business, and you would be the person to know about the retirement. What is the story of that? We're both getting into the letter, and when were we supposed to get that?
Okay, I think, I think. The town and the state said that they sent it.
I know.
You guys said you didn't get it.
Well.
Or you.
Truthfully, I may have gotten it, but Carrie said she didn't, and, but I think that I got it, but I don't know.
I think it's to the point where as an individual, now you have to call the state and say, I never got this, because it's like, we're just going back and forth.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna send it again, that's what I thought, and I wouldn't put the date, cause I think it's.
I have to.
The day that they, that it was about.
Well, they were, it was supposed to be.
It was supposed to go out last July.
Right.
And then it's July, so it's still July. It's July now, so we might be able to get a letter.
No, but I, the last July it went out to like, yes, I'm up for it or not.
Right, but I thought that Julie said they were gonna do it again, send another letter, but I will call and, uh, see whether we can get another.
Yeah, cause I think, I think wherever Julie gave you the person's name.
Uh, I don't know whether Julie did, I, I thought Julie sent it, uh, but somebody.
Retirement system?
Yeah, somebody.
So, there should be a website, yeah.
No, but I mean, we went, we, we went to the, the person, a person at the state retirement, they said, yes, we were eligible, they were eligible. And they were supposed to send, uh, Carrie and Gail information on it, and they had the option of getting into it or not. If anybody is hired after July first, there, there's no option, you have to get.
Automatically.
To get that, you know, you say that, but it's not gonna be automatically in that you fill out forms, and so we don't have forms.
But that's why I'm saying they're probably on that website. No, it, it's, there's. He was supposed to get it last July?
Yeah. I mean, I think I might have gotten it. I honestly, I might have gotten something from the retirement system. I didn't open it because I wasn't interested in the, um. Uh, retirement. And.
Are you now?
No, I'm not, but Carrie wants to see the. See it.
Yeah.
To decide for herself. And. I took, when I asked her whether, when. It's, you know, I asked her like, what, how she wanted to proceed with that. She said she missed got it. So then. You know, I did, yeah.
There is, there is a form to fill out because I've. When I did it in the school district, when you hire somebody, you know, you have to fill out a form. It's, there, there's not a choice. When you are hired. They were the only people that had choices because. We were starting it after.
And that's why they have it starting July, in July because.
Right.
Not a change in status, employment status.
Right.
It's in a month fiscal year too, and starts in July.
I think so.
I think, I believe.
That might be, I mean, I don't, I hope we don't have to wait a whole another year.
I'll find that. Well, if you, if you, yeah, I'll look for that woman's name. And make sure you have it. And I mean, if, if Carrie wants information, that you can get from the website. It tells you exactly who it is.
Yeah, so. Yeah, when I mentioned to her like a little bit about it.
Yeah.
She didn't seem really interested, but she also said. She wants to see it.
Right. Because she would be putting money into it.
Yeah, she didn't understand the how. She didn't understand.
The state has like that catch up thing where you can, you know. Would take into account the, the year she's been working and she could catch up.
Yeah, but she still had her money.
Yeah, she had her money. But I mean. Yeah, it's, it's not a big percentage, but.
Alright. So that brings us, uh. Brings us to an executive session for personnel issues. Um. Do we have a motion to go into executive, uh, session?
I motion to go into executive session to discuss personal issues.
Okay, do we have a mission to come out of motion, not a mission, a motion? Out of executive session.
I'll second.
Second, I win.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
At seven thirty-eight.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Um. So next on the agenda would be making decisions about what was discussed in the executive session.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Expenditure.
Huh?
Expenditure.
Expenditures. Ex, the funding expenditures.
For in-service day?
For, um. The. And service day. The employee in service day.
Don't sound that I walked away from that motion. Now I don't know what it was. Um, expenditure for in-service day for an insert, for employee in service.
Okay, so we're deciding that it's gonna be insert. Yes, I guess it's in service if they're on Monday or.
Yeah, yeah.
Alright, right, Friday. Yeah, okay, okay, um.
Alright, uh, any further discussion on it? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Motion carries. Was there any new business we needed to go over?
I would be interested in talking about the fall festival.
Okay.
Well, it's July and I'm thinking about it. It's in a couple of months. And I think last year was pretty successful. It would be nice to, um, do a signup sheet again. And, um, I don't know if we wanna to look into recruiting some volunteers. For, um, the fall festival to help us. And it would be, you know, the earlier, the sooner the better. I think the setup was really nice last year, the way it was set up.
Yeah.
I don't know about the furniture that we need, the tables. If we have enough or I know that Donna brought some stuff last year.
Yeah, I can probably get tables from Tara's.
Didn't, didn't we, I think we got tables. We had some from here. We had some from Tara's school.
Yeah.
I brought some. I think we had enough. I think I brought a tent.
Yeah.
Just so we weren't sitting out in the sun.
Yeah, that was actually really nice.
Yeah, um. Yeah, and it was set up really nice last year. So.
The, the thing about this year is that we don't have all those boxes.
We don't?
We don't need them all. We don't.
We don't have the boxes?
Or we don't have them.
We don't have all those boxes that we did last year, but you don't really need those boxes to have a book sale. You could line them up just. Often, they just, sometimes people put them in boxes.
No, but they were, but they, when they were out on the tables, they were in boxes. So people could read their spines.
I know, but you could also, many, if you look, Google and look for images for library book sales. Sometimes they're in boxes. Many, many times they're just lined up.
Right.
So that the, you know, you could still read the spine, but they're just not in boxes. We just do not have those boxes.
When, when people. Bring donations in. We could ask them to, I mean, they usually bring them in boxes, so we will have lots.
Yeah, but it's not, the thing, those are particular boxes. They weren't just any boxes.
They were like.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ask Smitty's if they could start keeping the produce stuff.
But we have no place to keep them.
Sure, I guess I'm wondering if there's.
Yeah.
That's the reason we don't have.
What to them?
Because a year ago. The one, the woman who.
Didn't, didn't I say I was gonna take them? Did I take them?
No, you, I might have said you're gonna take. And we had to get rid of many of them because they were.
Oh, they're the, oh, they're the, yeah, I got you, I got you. I stopped coming back to me now.
Like, yeah.
Some.
Yeah.
We do have some. I kept as many as I could, but Steve said. The fire department didn't like the way I would storing them. And so I did, don't wanna.
I could, I could have, I think I said to you, oh, I can put them in our barn.
Yeah, I have storage. I wonder if we can approach Smitty's and talk about the type of boxes we would need and. See if they might hold on to them. I'm sure they appreciate not having all that stuff going under their.
Another place too, besides Smitty's is closer, but whatever that Black River Produce in, um, Springfield. They probably have like lots more because they're distributor.
The co-op also had a ton of boxes all the time.
Yeah.
I was gonna suggest Smitty's.
She said Smitty's, Smitty's Springfield Co-op.
But the, the interesting thing about these boxes were that they were kind of on the flat side, like it's easier to browse through the paperbacks. And they're a certain height. If you have them too deep, then it's hard to look into the body.
They were, they were like vegetable cans.
I have collapsed berry boxes that. I use what I. Pick blueberries.
I didn't think you could collapse these, but maybe.
Yeah, you can.
I didn't know that. Yeah, so I haven't, they're, it's back there. We have them.
Well, we can. Can all take it on to see if we can find.
Boxes.
Boxes, the little, the lower.
Yeah.
Their, uh, yeah, produce boxes.
And we won't need them here. I mean, like, if you guys wanna start, if you got a lot of plates to keep a few. Get a few and then bring them in September.
How, how many do you need?
Well, you know what? The truth is, as many as we have, we'll make use of.
I think we used like fifty.
I don't know how many we have.
Because then we were like, we had them piled underneath the tables and then we're bringing them up and then we're taking the empty ones.
Didn't. Wow, that many of them. You could have them under the table in regular boxes. I mean, we'll make do.
Right.
And then.
Um, but you might wanna put something out that. We're taking donations.
Yeah, but we have no place to put them. I, we can't take, I mean, book sales. Okay, yeah, not quite yet.
Oh, yeah.
But we will because we get donations.
Right, but I mean, like I have right now, I have like four boxes of books stacked in my library at home. That I'm gonna bring.
Well, we do. People bring to us.
Right.
Four, five, six, eight boxes regularly. We get them regularly and I don't have, we don't have room for anymore right now. I'm not gonna turn anybody away.
No, but I remember, I mean.
Yes. September.
Yeah. Well, it's, when is the.
Oh, you gotta give people some time to. It's on, on the twentieth and twenty-first of September.
Okay, twentieth and first.
We can ask and then tell people there's a donation date.
Yeah, yeah, by this, yeah, because, because you also have to go through all the books. And sort them, um. So.
But I'm just saying we have right now. We have hundreds and hundreds of books that don't fit on the shelves. On the side. We are really at our capacity right this moment.
Alright, well. I mean, I'm willing to come in one day, we can go through them and.
Just no place to put them on the shelves.
I know, but I mean, just so we know that. I mean, I had people last year asking me if we had site, sets of encyclopedias. I'm like. If I had known, I have three sets of encyclopedias at home, collecting dust. You know, and I said this, I got the, the lady gave me her card. I'll bring them and I'll bring them and if nobody takes them, I'll take them back home.
I guess that would be fine because that, we don't want them.
No, I know we want that, I mean, but. I've got the Time Life books on the whole Wild West.
Oh, so I can tell you what people looking for those kind of books want them for. Aesthetics. They're looking for a. With a single, singular look.
Right. Oh, I have, we, I have, I have boxes that have all the classics. You know. That Victor Hugo and that were from Peter's. Great grandfather's library that are in boxes under the bed and like his brother said, he goes, oh, it's just like you pay by the foot. People, they wanna fill their library, so they pay by the foot and they're all really nice looking spines.
Well.
I mean, it's old.
We did have had in the past six months or so, there'd been several people that have moved here and actually. Spent hundreds of dollars just to decorate the life.
Well, good for them.
It came back multiple times, hundreds of dollars, yeah.
Wow, well, that's good. It's good for us.
So Laura, thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, and, uh, Donna, do you still have, uh, a copy of the signup sheet like in a doc, as a digital file?
Yeah.
Okay, maybe we can share that out. And I don't know if Gail, do you know of any volunteers that we could also recruit?
Uh, well, like what we did last, I'd send an email out to people asking.
Yeah.
I think there might have been one person who'd signed up, but I don't think they.
Didn't volunteer.
She volunteered, she was paid. And you can't volunteer at work.
No, this was on a, this was.
We paid her. Of course, we can't have an employee do work.
Yeah, but.
The Saturday.
Well, that was because, the reason is, she had to come in because. I was gonna come in. And I had COVID. So, I mean.
Paid as a substitute.
She was paid as a substitute because. Uh, she was needed and I know she was needed. That's what she told me she was, yeah.
Um, but no, that's fine. I mean, but. Yeah, I, or even if you just stick a, a sign on the desk that says looking for volunteers to help with the book sale.
Yeah, I'm just saying that we did also, I mean, I know that somebody signed up and. And when I set the thing out, I don't think you had another volunteer.
I mean, it was.
What you didn't, I can't remember.
You, Tara, me.
Laura.
Laura.
Sam came and helped us set up, right?
Yes. No, Peter came and helped to do set up. Sam, Sam was driving the tractor up and down the road.
Oh, okay.
Bill, Bill was there for.